Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to our the informational meeting of Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. Our first agenda item is committee and commission reports. Counselor Selberg, would you like to address the accessibility housing and advisory board?
Um, I unfortunately, I was, I did address this two meetings ago, the one that we just had. Uh, the one last week, I was not able to be there because I was in Pierce, so I will get a full report and catch up next week. How's that?
That sounds great.
All right, thank you.
We'll make sure we make that. Counselor Starr, Sioux Land Heritage Museum Board.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the main, uh, uh, topic of discussion at our meeting this month was the annual report. It's about 25 pages, and if you don't mind, I'm going to go line by line through it.
I do mind.
It's terrible sense of humor, so. Um, actually, I believe Mr. Hoskins, the museum executive director, is required by ordinance to present it to us before, uh, the 1st of July. So he will be in with the annual report for the museum and the enterprise funds that are part of, uh, the Heritage Museum. So I'm going to skip through that and just, uh, let you know that the, uh, in short, that the museum is in good financial, uh, position. Uh, as they close, the county closes the books, I think the city will get part of our money back, so we'll see a little bit of a rebate check, uh, from the museum that, uh, not all the funds were expended for the year. And again, you can rest assured that the, the financial part of the museum is in good shape, as well as the number of visitors are starting to return. And again, one of the other major topics of discussion, I think every board, every business, every or organization that, uh, is also having employee issues and getting people there. So, uh, the county has made some steps to increase pay, um, that, uh, goes into the base pay salary of the employees. Um, and I think that will help in, uh, recruiting, but, uh, it will still be an ongoing issue, just like every other organization in, in our country. So, thank you.
Thank you. This time we'll have council remarks. Counselor Brecky.
I have kind of an informal report I'd like to give, and I'm going to start with a thank you to Councilmember Jensen. He's not expecting this, but it comes as a thank you, and I'll explain why. Um, after we dealt with the municipal band and they were moved over to the pavilion, I kind of followed them over there because I was concerned about the fact that we sent them over with the same amount of money that they had before, and I was really wanting to see them prosper and reinvent themselves and become even better. And I was just wanting to micromanage that issue a little bit and offer any support that I could to make sure that they had enough funding, you know, for that to happen if there were additional things they wanted to do with it. So over time, I've been meeting with Darren Smith, and we involved Chris Hill in the process. And I want to report, and the thank you comes from, I mean, it's been a really good thing that's happened. I mean, you were the one that kind, that was really involved in that. Um, it's been a really good landing place for them. Um, they have support and family there. I mean, they have the same kind of, um, energy that, you know, that, that artists have there. So it's different than just kind of being this, you know, this, this thing that the, the, they didn't really fit anywhere in with the park. So that part has been really good. And what's happened financially is by integrating all of the administrative costs into existing staff and structure, they've actually saved money. And they are going to be able to, and these are the things that we worked out, they're going to be able to, with the existing funding, without any additional funding for now, um, they're going to be able to have new uniforms. Um, and they're going to do three new concerts. They're going to have a rotating concert that rotates in small cities outside of the city of Sioux Falls, which I think is a fabulous idea, you know, kind of being a, a good big brother to our neighbors and sharing, sharing them with them. They're also going to do a concert, um, outside of the pavilion, and they're working on, you know, doing a concert in conjunction with the Levitt. So, um, they are improved, and that, that's really kind of what I had in mind, not, you know, uh, just to, to, to make them better and, and, um, the, the relationship in the home that you found for them has just worked out really well. And so I wanted to report that to the council. I'm super excited about it. Um, there may be even more things they can do in the future, and there may be in the future a need for a little additional funding, but for now, um, really that was, um, a lot of new and additional things to be able to do on the same budget, and I was excited about it. Again, you know, thank you for your foresight and putting them in a place that I think has really become a good home for them. So, there you go.
Thank you. Other council remarks? I guess I just would, uh, be remiss if I didn't point out that the Olympics are on, and I believe curling will start on Friday, if you're interested, and I know everybody is, and we got a good shot at the gold. So, stay on the edge of your seat there. At this time, we're going to go to our presentation, the transit update. Sam Trebelcock, please.
Good afternoon. Sam Trebelcock, Senior Planner, Planning and Development Services. With me today is Robert Speaks, General Manager, Suri Metro, Jeff Eckhoff, of course, Director of Planning and Development Services. And then also, I'm happy to say, on, on her second day, is our new Transit Program Coordinator, Brenn Schweitzer. Um, Brenn comes to us with a 17 years of experience in transit, actually even maybe a little bit more than that. Um, and we're very happy to have her aboard. Um, so today, presentation that I'm providing to you is kind of an update, or also what we're calling Remaking Transit in Sioux Falls. Really lessons learned from our SAM On Demand pilot project, which you've heard a little bit about, want to give you an update on that. And then also the future of transit services, what we are kind of learning from, uh, SAM On Demand and how we can kind of take this forward, um, some, to some different, uh, different services. So first, um, I want to do a little bit of, of information about where Suri Metro Services are when you, in regards to growth. Of course, it's, you all, you all know how much Sioux Falls is growing. Um, this map really represents, um, where Suri Metro is, and this, the blue here, that middle blue area, is Suri Metro Services for Paratransit Services. So it's three quarters of a mile from any fixed route. That's what I would represent as kind of the Suri Metro Service area. It represents really a little less than 60% of current city limits. So what this represents, it's very difficult for us to, and this, uh, to keep up with city growth, um, with our services. We do not by any means serve all of Sioux Falls with, with services. At the same time, um, our fixed route ridership has been decreasing, oh, not just in the past year, year and a half with the pandemic, but also has been decreasing over, really since 2012. And to kind of show as a, um, a barometer of where we are nationally, it's actually very consistent what we see nationally. And that's what this slide shows, is, um, how the decrease has been, uh, very similar. So this, what we're trying to say is transit services around the country are having the same problems. We're trying to find, find different ways of providing services. Why are people, um, leaving transit? And we think there's a lot of different reasons for it, but some of that is because we're just not keeping up. This is, it shows some more recent trends. Um, of course, as you can see in 2019, that's what are, uh, the blue line. 2020, we had that huge dip there in, in March with COVID that first came on. Then it came back a little bit. What I really wanted to highlight with this slide is that it really, since in 2021, did not come back much. It kind of leveled off. It came back up in, by August of 2020, and pretty is, pretty much has been pretty static and level since then, and has not come back to the 2019 levels at this time. Also, another slide to show you is transit revenue. Um, even though we increased, um, transit fares, it was somewhere 16, 17, we increased fares, because ridership has been sliding. Well, right now, our revenue is about the same as it was in 1995. So again, that shows another, um, issue that we certainly have in, in the transit area. So that's really where SAM On Demand came on, and, and you guys have been briefed on that in the past, and this is kind of an update of that. And what we're really highlighting again here is that it really is a data-driven approach to re, helping us remake transit. And this map in itself is a big part of that. And this is, uh, the, our June through November 2021 origin and destination. So basically, it's every single line you see on here is a ride that was made in that six months. What this really highlights is the scatter that we have, um, scattered number of trips. Um, and I'll highlight this a little bit more, but, um, you can really see there's not any real major origin and destination groupings here on this map. And it really makes it hard for fixed route to provide that services because of it. Again, this is just on Saturdays. There's a little bit of different story when you get into weekdays, but something certainly to highlight, and I'll get into a little bit more in another slide. Some of you might know this, but I think it's important to note, um, the differences between fixed route and on-demand, and the kind of on-demand that we're doing here. Fixed route is a transit service that follows the same route each trip and picks up riders at designated bus stops. So the bus riders follow bus schedules to know when they must be at the bus stop, and many trip, trips must transfer at the downtown depot. So for them to get a full trip in sometime, almost always, I mean, maybe a little less than a third of the time, they might be able to stay on the same route to get to their destination. Most of the time, they have to go from Route 5 to the Route 8 to get to their destination and transfer at the downtown depot. Whether it's SAM On Demand, they don't have to transfer on SAM On Demand, but what they need to do is schedule a ride and do it with the Riders App, website, or a phone call. What's interesting about this kind of on-demand service is its same-day availability. So you don't have to call the day before, like you do Paratransit. You can schedule a ride within, really, um, as soon as possible. You can schedule that ride right away. Um, and, uh, as soon as possible, might be as early as 15, 20 minutes. Now, within that time that you schedule it, there's a 20-minute ride window. So, similar to Paratransit, Paratransit has a 30-minute ride window. So that's when you can expect the bus in somewhere in that 20-minute ride window. Pick-up and drop-off is at the bus stop with the SAM On Demand. It's not at your house or your destination like Paratransit is. It's at the bus stops. And riders can track the ride if they have the app, so that they can actually see when the bus is coming. So they wouldn't necessarily stand out in the cold until they know the bus is coming to that bus stop. But if they don't have the app, that's a challenge that we'll talk about a little more. So with that, um, this is our on-demand review for the last, uh, for the six months, June through the end of November 2021. What we had in that time, it was 26 days of service during that time. Uh, we had 18 minutes, uh, average ride time, so people were on the bus for an average of 18 minutes. So there's no transfer that they have during that time. They just go from their origin to their destination during that time, that 18 minutes. That's the average. Their wait time, now we said that there was a 20-minute ride window. Would they typically would have to wait about 13 minutes. That's the average. We had 74% of the rides that were completed on time or early, so there were still some after that were beyond the 20 minutes, but 74, most of them were during that 20-minute period. You can see OD trip, trip requests typically during that time, very stable. We were seeing, and I have another slide up here soon, but very, um, stable in terms of the, the days that we have. Pretty much, we're getting the same requests, the same rides, same number of rides. In terms of, on that lower left-hand corner, that's, um, where we're seeing our peaks during the day. It's usually 8:00 AM and about 2:00 PM is where we get our major peaks. This helps, this data helps us kind of know how many buses we need to be, have out there during those times. And then you can see the ride and wait times, and I kind of already told you about the averages, but you can kind of see most of them, um, are within that 0 to 15-minute timeframe. Uh, we do have some that are within that 15 to 30 minutes for ride times. And then, uh, the one to the, um, on, on, on the lower right-hand corner is the average wait time. So we had about, uh, 22% that were in that 15 to 30-minute range. As I talked about, if you have the app or use the app, um, we've seen some changes over the last time I came in. Certainly have seen increased use in the app from, uh, the pilot, uh, early phase, the warm-up phase. So you'll see on January 2021, that upper-right-hand corner, that's, the dispatcher is when people are calling in. We had 60% of the people at that time that were calling in. Um, so in the lower right-hand corner, you'll see we had only 40, we had less, 43% were calling in. And now, from 28% were using the app early on to almost half now are using the app. So we're seeing some, we, we, we want to see more improvements with that. Uh, we know that there's limitations to that. Not everybody will have access to the app. Um, but our Suri Metro staff works hard at it. We want to do some more marketing in that area, and that is certainly, uh, helping with some of our services there. So this just kind of shows you the origin and destinations, um, where people are being picked up, um, by SAM On Demand on Saturdays. So you can kind of see the downtown area, the Empire Mall area, the Walmart area in the southwest, the Walmart area on the east side, um, and a number of locations, but, um, very similar of the origin and destinations. But it doesn't really tell the whole story until you bring in these origin and destination pairs. Now, the one on the left is the one that, um, details the information from the past six months, the, the most recent six months. Um, you can see the scatter. That was the first map I showed earlier. The one on the right is the one that we did during our warm-up phase, and you'll see a significant difference there because we were able to see some very significant patterns in origin and destinations, that we were able to create a crosstown route. And so that was one of the things that we did with the data, is we created out of this origin and destination pairs on the right, two custom-made fixed routes, um, a west, uh, crosstown route and an east-side crosstown route. And, um, you can see the differences that happened when we took those rides out, as shown on the left side. Those rides aren't accounted for because they're using the crosstown, um, routes. So we, again, see significant reasons that we can, um, benefits that we can use, utilize this data. And this kind of highlights that in our SAM On Demand ridership during this time. Um, the, um, line on the, uh, the orange line on the bottom is our crosstown totals. So we were able to really get, even though this kind of looks like it's going up and down, it's really pretty stable. We're seeing kind of the same kind of crosstown, the dips that you're seeing probably is bad weather, thunderstorm, or winter weather, or things like that. Um, but pretty stable ridership. The same thing on the blue line, which is SAM On Demand, still has pretty stable ridership. When you add it all up together, that's what you get, your, your overall Saturday ridership. And, um, and very stable during this time period. And, uh, um, really kind of interesting the, the way that we can use the data to kind of help that. Uh, because it certainly provided assistance for the SAM On Demand to bring in the crosstown routes. We were seeing a lot less, um, where the buses had to go all the way across town to pick people up. The amount of miles that we were using on the buses went down because of it. So that was, uh, certainly, certainly helped out, uh, a lot of, a lot of the, um, ridership times that we were having, too. Now, I showed this, um, the last time I was here talking about SAM On Demand, but I think it's important to note again, there are differences between on-demand and fixed route. Um, each one has its, its, uh, strengths and its weaknesses, but this kind of shows some of the strengths for the most part. SAM On Demand fixed route, very reliable. It's going to be there at the same time exactly. You can count on it. SAM On Demand is more flexible. You can request a ride for a time that you want, whereas fixed route, it's only coming around every hour, at the most every half hour. Fixed route, you can get a lot of ridership on fixed routes. So if you have a lot of density and a lot of needs and demand, that's the way to go, because you're going to get ridership that can really, it can handle the ridership. SAM On Demand, if you have lower ridership or a new area, it's more efficient. If you don't have much ridership, you're not running empty buses. You're always running somebody that's going to be needing a ride. Um, fixed route, you don't need the technology. You don't need to schedule it with an app or call in. With on-demand, it's an emerging technology, something people are looking for, kind of an Uber, um, type of ride experience, that more flexibility. Um, fixed route doesn't have as much data available as I showed you with some of the SAM On Demand. We really see benefits from that. Fixed route, you need Paratransit, so you need that other service. You need something within that area because not everybody can rot, walk to the, the fixed route bus stop. With SAM On Demand, one of the things that we're piloting right now is you don't need another service, because they're both on-demand. The only difference is with Paratransit type of services, you have to go to their, their curb, to their doorstep. And we think we can share that services, and we're doing it actually a little bit now, and it's, uh, uh, we think there's some good possibilities there. Um, fixed route, there is limited frequency. With on-demand, that's, that's kind of one of the, um, things that we ought to always work on and, and understand one of the limitations. On on-demand, people can sometimes, and are scheduling rides, and then they don't show up. So how do you deal with that? And that's something that we're working through, because you don't want to waste that trip. So some of the wins that we've had in this, during this period, um, we've been able to expand services to north Sioux Falls. So we didn't have, um, on Saturdays, we weren't providing services to what you call the routes, 8 and 19 areas. Eight is the industrial park on the north, northeast, and 19 is up to the Walmart, um, on the northwest. So we were able to open those bus stops up on Saturdays with SAM On Demand services. So that, we think that's really was a, a significant win and showed us something that we think we could also provide in other areas of the city, in other times. Also, we did the crosstown east and west services. That kind of enhanced services and also enhanced, we think, some of the on-demand services. And then, as I mentioned before, Paratransit plus SAM On Demand Pilot, we're starting that process now. We think there's some real possibilities where we wouldn't need both services. You're still going to need to provide both, um, both types of rides, but you, we think we can do it within one set of, of fleet services. So some of our top findings, um, SAM On Demand can provide transit services more efficiently in low-ridership areas. Uh, fixed route service is better to handle service in high-ridership areas. SAM On Demand service provides invaluable data to help provide, to develop too strong indirect Saturday fixed routes. We think that same thing could, could, we could see a little bit of information provided, uh, in other areas, too. Um, SAM On Demand services are a good option to ex, expand in new areas of the city. Uh, on-demand services have the potential to service Paratransit and general transit customers. And then SAM On Demand services can be provided with smaller vehicles. And, um, a little bit more on this, right now, we're running the big vehicles on Saturday. We thought we could maybe see, um, some heavier concentration of origin and destinations where we'd get more loading on those buses, and we're not. And that's part of the, what we're seeing with the data. So what we think we would do with on-demand services, if we would move into weekdays in some areas, we wouldn't need as big a bus. Not significant, because it, obviously, a big bus is significant investment. And, um, we want to make sure we get that right. So, but we think that there's certainly the on-demand can be provided with a smaller vehicle. And then the SAM On Demand app is not available enough riders yet. That's something we continue to work on. We want to provide that, uh, in a more equitable way, um, to the people that don't have the mobile services. So that's, um, our major findings on, uh, SAM On Demand over this time. Another thing to, to note is we do have, um, automatic passenger count data that we are incorporating into our weekday buses. We provide them on four buses, and we got in, incredible amount of data, um, just, especially in the areas of how, uh, where people are getting on and off stops. And we don't have the origin and destination information, but we know where people are getting on off. The reason that's so important is we want to, we want to update our route system. And that's important data to get, because you can't update your route system unless you know what's really, um, are your strong routes, your strong parts of routes, and which routes and parts of routes are weak and not being, um, provided for services. So this data, um, we think has a lot of potential to be done, um, in the future. We see a lot of potential, um, to be doing this permanently on our, uh, on our fixed route buses, and I'll show you why this is important later on, which is really what's next for transit. Um, the three things that I just wanted to highlight here is we're in the process of, uh, looking at mobile ticketing as an option for our riders, and we think this would provide, um, another option for riders. It wouldn't be the only option. Um, but a lot of people, I think, would make use of it. Um, and we do have, right now, fare boxes on, on the buses, but a lot of times when you put the tickets in, they get jammed and things like that. We think the opportunity there, uh, is really the trend. And plus, there's something called fare capping, where what you can do is, a lot of people, the 30-day pass, they can't make use of it, because they don't have enough money upfront to purchase that. So they'll buy a, a day pass, and they'll try to do as much as they can with that day pass. But they'll probably spend more than $30 in a month. Well, fare capping, you pay $3 if you have the mobile ticketing service, and by the time you get to that 10th trip, it caps it, and you get the rest of the month free. So we think that's a really equitable way of doing things for people with limited incomes, and just one example of, of, of kind of the, um, mobile ticketing enhancement that could be provided. Um, so we, we're looking forward to that, and you can be looking forward to that in the spring. New bus shelters, I know a lot of times there's, uh, interest in adding bus shelters, where our bus shelters are aging, and, and we want to improve those bus shelters so that we can maintain them. Uh, we also want them to be more easily maintained. Um, right now, that's sometimes of a, uh, with the current design, a little difficult. And sometimes we have to pull them out of certain areas that probably we would like not to. So we're looking for a different design there. And then lastly, what's a lot of the information that provided all the way through this, um, presentation is our Transit Route and Operations Analysis. We're kind of in the early stages of that. So we're using the, the information I just showed you from the automatic passenger counters. We're going to look at optimizing the number and size of buses. We're going to look at ways to expand coverage area through on-demand, and then focus fixed route in high-ridership corridors and try to increase the frequency, because we think we can increase ridership. There's other places around the country that are doing that, Duluth, Omaha. They're looking for areas that they can provide more frequency and focus on the high-ridership corridors. And then what we would do, the areas that still maybe have some, um, need, but it's lower, it's too low for fixed route, that's where we would focus on-demand services. And then we think, as I showed, kind of with the expansion of our route 8 and 19 areas, that we can really expand into new areas of the community, too, and do that by, um, kind of marrying services with Paratransit. So, um, that's kind of a quick run-through. The whole idea of remaking transit isn't going to a totally different service. It's kind of a hybrid service. It's looking at utilizing our existing services of fixed route and para, but adding in something that we've, um, trying here with on-demand. And, the mix of that is something you'll see as we move on through this process with the route analysis. So with that, I would take, any questions you have?
Questions. Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Counselor Sale. So if you look at your, I think it's your fourth slide, third with data, it's the recent trends, 2019 through 2022, 2021. Are your numbers in the 2021 numbers in this graph artificially low because they do not, uh, put in the on-demand? Are your numbers in the 2021 numbers in this graph artificially low because they do not put in the On Demand transit riders into that graph? So would our ridership actually have been increased a little bit more in 2021?
No, you know, if you look at the On Demand, it's, it's a little tough to totally apples to apples with On Demand. And actually, it's incorporated here. I mean, everything would be in here. If you look at the On Demand, I mean, we're typically doing 250 rides, maybe 300, 250 to 300 rides a day with the crosstown. You know, we were actually doing more rides than that when it was fixed route. But the problem is, a lot of them were transferring. So they were doing two rides. So that's why I bring up, you know, fixed route still is going to do more rides. What On Demand does for you, it helps you provide service area.
For sure. I would just, you know, as your slide says, it says fixed route ridership trend. So it just doesn't paint the whole picture for us to make accurate information. You know, the other thing I'd maybe just recommend you do, since you have all this data now and you can really hone into it, and I don't know this answer. The answer to this question is, how many young people do we help get to and from school? And then how many young people do we help get to and from activities that they need to get to? And because that'd be a critical area to, to look at, because they, they could be some of the people that ride your bus, you know, for a long time. We have a tremendous amount of youngsters on free and reduced lunch in our school system, and they'd be helpful and be a partner in this. So as you continue to roll out this program, I'd encourage you to look into the school system, and you maybe have already, and how we can impact those young riders that need a ride somewhere that may not be able to be in, you know, some activity because of X, Y, and Z. And that, that's something I'd like kind of some of the data on, is how many young people do we have riding to school, to activities? So that if we're going to help, you know, subsidize this, that's something that I think we could help subsidize to get those youngsters to their activities and, and to the proper place.
Yeah, so if I could, it's good, and that's something we certainly could provide. Right now, what we do with the schools, the schools right now have, especially at the high schools, they'll provide rides with School Bus Inc. to, you know, on certain routes to home and back. But some do still ride our, our system, too. And so we used to provide and do, do the services that School Bus Inc. did, we did, Suri Metro did. But we kind of made a deal, because it was just costing us too much capital for buses, that we were holding on to buses for just two rides a day. So we said, okay, fine, you're going to do those. And some of them are still riding our buses, because some of the buses will come from the high school straight to the depot. And then they'll ride from the depot, and they'll ride Route 5 or the Route 8. And we said, anybody that has a school bus pass that they pay, we comp them. So they're free. So anybody that has that. Now, if they don't have it, you're right, they would have to pay, but typically, that's the way that they're riding around. So if they are a bus rider and they, a school, high school bus rider, and for instance, they want to stay for an activity, or they are staying for an activity after school, they can now use our system, because that one ride that School Bus Inc. is already, you know, at 3 o'clock. I mean, they're not going home until 4. So we'll still provide them that, that service if they, free of charge.
Okay, yeah. Just something to, I think, really hone in on. I think there's a big opportunity there. And of course, it's going to cost money, but you know, we, we can work through those, those challenges together to make sure that our kids are in the proper activities and have the proper, you know, rides that they need to get places. I've just heard it from others, you know, in the community, others on the council that say, you know, if you don't have a ride to get to football practice, or you don't have a ride to get out to Howard Wood, or you don't have a ride, you know, after 5 o'clock, you're less likely to be involved in school activities. And we all know the statistics around school activities and how beneficial they are to our community. So I would just use that as, you know, if, if you're looking for, you know, vision from up here, I think that's something that we should really look at.
Sure. Other questions? Counselor Knight.
Mr. Chair.
Let me go to Counselor Erickson on the phone first.
Okay, thanks, sorry, thank you very much. There's the delay, and it always makes me speak over others. I didn't do it on purpose, sorry, Greg. My question is for SAM. Talk to me a little bit about how federal funding will be impacted as we see our population growing to that 200,000. What, what will that look like? Will there be any impact as we move forward? Will we see additional funds? How does that look?
Sure. So it probably, more than likely, it'll be 10 years out, that we're affected by that change. But certainly, any increase in population during this time can, can assist us a little bit. But when it changes to 200,000, it, it just, right now, we're getting operating assistance when you're under 200,000. When you're over 200,000, you're getting capital assistance. And so it just changes. Most other communities that are over 200,000 are still getting a significant amount of money, but it's, you have to capitalize those. It's just not coming in as operating assistance. So it's just done differently. So it's, it's hard to say for sure, you know, what that effect is going to have. You know, right now, we're getting about 2.6 million. I would expect we'd get somewhere in the same vicinity if we were over 200,000, and we're not. But it would just be in a different manner.
Counselor Erickson, any follow up?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Knight.
Thank you. Just a few comments. You know, when, back when this was first starting, I, I felt like the data would tell the story and that probably a hybrid was probably going to be the answer. And it sounds like that's kind of where it's landing. I'm really excited to see the automatic passenger counts. I, I, I thought early on that one of the things was, we were flying blind without knowing where, where people were getting off and on. And so there's so much that we can learn. And as time goes by, you're going to be able to continue to learn from that. So I'm just really excited about, about this. And I, reading books about this, they talk about, you know, it, it's not that complicated as far as ridership. And one of the things is, in terms of getting ridership up, is getting people picked up quickly and getting them to where they want quickly. And that's where, if we're able to take some of the same funding we have, and we find out that there's certain routes that have more ridership, and we can maybe do those more, so that people are picked up quicker and they get where they want to go faster. And then we may be able to, to have more resources there. But then, if we pulled something away from another area that's lower ridership, we may be able to backfill that with something like On Demand, which is lower ridership, and then potentially work on some of the outer areas of the city. So we may be able to do the things like expand throughout, you know, farther out in the city and get, get some high frequency trips on those really, really in-demand routes. And then watch the data and kind of see how, how it moves. I'm, I'm sure this will be a dynamic thing that, over time, if you continue to get the data, you can always be making adjustments. So it's just very exciting to see that we're making some movement, because we've talked about this problem for way longer than, you know, before I was here, about, you know, how do you tackle this, this beast? And so it's great to see innovation is maybe going to help us provide better service. So, thanks.
Other questions, counselors? Counselor Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. SAM, regarding the slide, how do riders schedule a trip? In January of 21, 59% were using the dispatcher. And then, in that period of June through November of 21, it dropped 16% to 43%. Any way of determining what it would have been just in the month of November of 21? Because when you're averaging June through November, that could kind of skew your results somewhat. It, it could actually be a lower? Or could it possibly be lower? If you analyzed only November of 21 and compared that to January 21? Just trying to determine how, how well they're catching on to the use of the app.
Yeah, you know, one thing that we did during this time, and we found a significant impact from it, although it kind of waned over time, was that we were trying to encourage people to use the app. And so we, we had a promotion through October where anybody that used the app could ride for free. And it got people's attention. You know, anytime you, you bring up that, you know, hey, free rides, so people started, you know, trying to make use of it. And so we saw a jump during that time. But you're right, so by November, it was over. That, and, and it might have slid a little bit, but generally, people that were using it saw, I think, also the benefits from it. But we certainly could pull out November 21 and, and see, you know, how it was different than the other months, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, the more we can shift to, to the app, I mean, the more staff time is freed up in, in the, in the process.
Yeah, we see, you know, during certain times of the day, we need more staff at the depot to help some of our call-ins. And you can see when they probably are. It's around 8:00 AM when people are first calling in, because they can call in the same day. So we're hoping that when more people use the app, that, that can also be decreased.
As, as you stated in your presentation, I mean, the SAM on Demand is, is great in the low ridership areas. And it's especially, it serves the individuals that require paratransit very well, because it opens up transportation to those that are outside of the limits of the fixed routes. And who are ineligible for paratransit because of where they, they live. So it, it would be great to see us move to a hybrid where that On Demand is, is available full-time. And then the fixed routes are, are, are serving those high-demand ridership areas as well, too. I think there's a lot to benefit from that type of a model. So thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Silver. Thank you, Mr. Chair. SAM, thank you for the presentation and thanks for your efforts. And the other folks, too, have worked a long time on this project. And I agree with Counselor Knight, it's kind of exciting to see, like, we're maybe seeing a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel with some of these efforts, and things are improving. The On Demand certainly seems to be overwhelming success and not much downside, if what I'm seeing from a couple of the slides. So are there any downsides, other than the no-shows, what you put on there? And how big of a problem is that? What kind of numbers is it for no-shows?
You know, one of the things, I mean, I don't want to, you know, tell you that everything is, is perfect out there when you're doing it. It's a new service.
Right.
It was new for riders. It was new for drivers. If anything I maybe failed to even talk about is how much, you know, we, we really need to thank Suri Metro for doing something that's really new. Because there are a lot of things during this pilot that, you know, we had to work through some late rides for a number of reasons. Sure, you had some riders that were kind of angry, trying to figure out how to work through that. They need to figure out how to schedule a ride, whereas before, they would have a ride at a certain very specific time. Now the rides could be different every time. So they need to figure out how to schedule rides. It's a different kind of service. So we've, we've learned from some of that. And some of that does dovetail in what we talked about. The areas that are higher ridership areas tend to be more in the core area. The areas that are the core area tend to be areas where people don't have the app services. And so those are things that we want to try to accommodate and work towards, is, is also looking at, you know, what the riders want. But at the same time, you know, there's got to be an efficiency component to it. So we're trying to work through everything. So, yeah, there's, there's things that we've worked through and continue to. In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow, if anybody's interested. We're working through a list of very specific dialed-in areas. Where Robert, I'll be meeting with Pantonium staff to try to figure out how we can improve services. And so it still is, you know, a pilot.
Right. Yeah, there'll always be growing pains, I'm sure, but it's encouraging news. So thanks again for the efforts.
Counselor Starr, please.
Thank you. SAM, one of the things the mayor talked about this morning at the news conference was the, the, I'm not sure he used the word surprise, but used that, that there are a number of people that we're trying to serve that don't have the technology to do that. Do you have any way of tracking how many people are using On Demand by calling in or scheduling other ways, rather than being able to have that cell phone or the app to?
Yeah, so, I mean, that's kind of what this is showing, how, although kind of in, in an aggregate view, you know. So we do know overall, you know, who they are. And, and, you know, I mean, we're, we're getting some traction. Before, we were like 60, 40 in terms of people calling in versus app. And now we're kind of more 50, 50, or even reversing that trend. So, yeah, we know that, in some cases, we've talked about it a lot. How can we, what's going on on the ground? Is it all that people just don't have the services? Or in some cases, is it just easier to call in? And, and some of it is, it's, it's some of both. They're used to just calling in, because they can get somebody else to do it for them, and they're trying to figure this out, because it's new to them. And I get it. Again, like we talked about, this is new. Change is hard. So there's some of that that we're dealing with, absolutely.
It's not like they're calling from a payphone. I tried to explain a payphone to my kids the other day, and having quarters in my pocket to, to do that, so it all changes.
A lot of cases, they're calling probably from a smartphone. Not all the time. They're calling sometimes from a flip phone. Sometimes they are actually literally going up to the window, and they're, they're talking to somebody at the depot. So we know that's happening, too. It's not just one thing.
Thank you.
Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Counselor. With your transit revenue trends, your 95 to 21 slide, and I know we could look at this and get the budget book out and kind of see, but it'd be, I'd be curious to know where, where the expense trends have been in relation to that? And like, what are the, excuse me, goals you may have to reduce expenses by SAM on Demand? And, and how that has actually happened? And I know it's still a pilot, but I think if we roll this out, and, and everyone is, and I agree with them, said there's a lot of good things. But looking at those measurable goals, so we can actually continue to improve our system. The other curious question that I had is, when you have your, your map graphic, and then you kind of look in that southeast section of town, there's not a lot of ridership kind of in the southeast section of town. And, and maybe not west or in the northwest, where there's a lot of apartments going up. But I'd be curious if we can use our GIS mapping system to overlay this, to where there may be communities that would value a bus stop? If that's how you evaluate where this may go and where ridership may actually be directed to? You know, you guys probably do that, but it's just a, a thought that I had with the technology that you guys are now providing in your info hot maps. And then with, you know, Eckoff's group, and, and, and how can we, how can we grow this in, in the proper way, rather than, you know, well, this route is pretty big? But go ahead.
So, yeah, with the, to give you a little bit of a highlighted process, the route analysis and operations analysis that we're doing, it'll be an open book for everybody to kind of see what we're doing. We're kind of in the early stages of starting to put together some scenarios. We'll obviously have a lot of public involvement. Those scenarios will be things that will be open to discussion and input throughout the entire process. That includes, you know, where we're going to put a bus stop in a new area that might be provided by On Demand. Or how are we going to service On Demand? Is it door-to-door, or is it actually a combination of some people would be door-to-door and others would be at bus stops? And where are you going to locate those bus stops? So those are, yeah, exactly. We'd certainly utilize the GIS based upon, you know, hey, where's the population at? Where's the density at? All those things will be important to incorporate.
Other questions? Counselor Knight.
Just the last few, I should know this. Can you, can you book a ride online on a website, or do you have to use the app?
No, you can, you, you have three options for, for booking a ride on SAM on Demand. You can do it with the website, that's one option, with the app or, or calling in.
Okay. The reason I ask is, obviously, there may be some that maybe they don't have data on their phone or whatever. But, you know, maybe there's even ways in which, you know, service organizations, social service organizations, like Bishop Dudley, you know, they've got the computers there and stuff.
Right.
Maybe they can, you know, the staff knows how to do it, they could help their clients, things like that.
And that's where we do see some people using the website, you know, is, is that it might be an on-behalf ride.
Sure.
Somebody with LifeScape, or somebody might be doing on behalf of a client or something like that.
As far as your... As far as your, you've had to make adjustments in your scheduling because of the drivers. How, how is that going and what is, have you identified what the, what you think the, I mean, everybody is struggling for employees, that's a given, but is there anything particular that you've identified as the reason that, you know, in this particular case?
In terms of drivers and our driver shortage?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to let Robert speak to that directly because he's dealing with it on the ground, so.
Okay.
Robert speaks, General Manager Suri Metro. Good question to ask. It has been a very challenging element to deal with. Currently, we had 38 drivers for the fixed route services. That's the amount of drivers it takes to, to do the full extent of full service. When you do not have 38, you can go down to 36 and now you're forcing your other employees to work on their off days. It gets tougher. When you go down to 33, which is where we are currently, it gets even more challenging. So with that, you have to take your peak hour services out of the equation. So your frequency goes down from, from 30 minutes to an hour. So those are the parts that you have to take out because you do not have the staffing part of it. Calls, you have COVID, you have medical leave. I think one thing that's unsung is what actually does COVID do? And it's mental and physical. I think we hear more physical than mental.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Other questions, counsel? SAM, I've got one. On your, on your front page, you said only 59.5% of the city is covered by transit services. What's our goal?
What's the what?
What's our goal? Do we want to cover the whole city?
I think that's always a goal. I, I don't know if that in the end will get there completely. I, I think we want to move towards that for sure. You know, I, certainly we get calls, Suri Metro gets calls, hey, can you provide services to us? Especially para-transit, we get those kind of calls and it's tough to say no, but that's just a reality right now. So it's tough to keep up. But that would, that would be, you know, a stretch goal. But, you know, certainly there are services that we've been, you know, in the southeast area and the west area town, southwest area town that we want to try to provide more services to, for sure.
Well, I really appreciate it and I appreciate all the work that you've done. It seems to me like you might be trying to do a jigsaw puzzle with one hand, a Rubik's Cube with another hand, and you're riding unicycle all at the same time. You have a complex problem and a complex job. I greatly appreciate what you've done. Counsel, at this time, we're going to have public comment. If there's anybody from the public would like to address the transit system, how's your time? Seeing none? Counselor Jensen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd make a motion to move in to an executive session discussing information listed in subdivisions 127-1.58 and 127-1.517 pursuant to SDCL 12526.
Second. Kylie? Moved in second by Kylie. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
opposed, say no. We're going to move into executive session. Thank you very much for attending.